7:04. Can you please stand and join me with the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have established that there is a quorum. There are three trustees present, and I count as part of the quorum. So we shall proceed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burns, absent, with notice. Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Jones, absent. Trustee Zapp?
Here.
Trustee Sterling?
Trustee Sterling, he's stuck on a metro train. She's waiting for that notice, and I'm also-
All it, on the news, before coming.
So she'll be trying to-
She's still trying to come, but she will be late. Just does not know what time she'll get here, but she will be trying to press her way.
Trustee Dr. Wilson?
Here.
Pastor Pitts, may we have a word from you, please?
Testing, one, testing. God bless each and every one. And I ask you to just stand as I pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this meeting on tonight. Lord, I come asking in the name of Jesus that you bless this committee, our mayor, our village clerk, and all of our trustees. Even the one that's trying to get here. Bless her to make it here safely, Lord. Bless those that are coming a little bit later on that they make it here safely. Bless this entire room, Lord Jesus. Lord, we're asking this in the name of Jesus that you fill this place with your love. Let us be mindful of one another in what we say to one another. The Bible says that we are drawn to each other. It says, "If we love one another, all things can be done and all things can be made new." So I bless each and every one as the Lord has blessed me because he woke me up this morning, and I'm so grateful. And we all are here. We're in our right minds. The blood is yet running warm in our veins. We thank God for all things. There's nothing that has not been done or made that God was not a part of. So I thank God for this meeting, for this agenda, and everyone that is here. Thank God, and let us say amen.
Amen.
God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor. May God bless the hearers and doers of his word. We're moving on. Item two is executive closed session, and I know that we have pending litigation to discuss. Are there any other areas that are exempt that's posted on this agenda that someone would want to entertain in closed session?
Is that your session number?
Okay. So, may I have a motion?
So move.
I had to say it first. May I have a motion to recess to closed session to discuss pending litigation and to review executive session minutes? May I have that motion?
So move.
It's been moved by trustee Johnson. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burns, absent. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones, absent. Trustee Zapp?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling, absent. Trustee Dr. Wilson?
Yes.
That motion carries. We are going to executive closed session at 7:09 PM. And we will turn to some other.
Is he okay? I don't have my phone in here.
David, make that decision hold now.
Thank you, everyone, for waiting for us. It truly appreciated. May I have a motion to reconvene the regular board meeting at 8 o'clock PM? May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Moved by trustee Johnson. Seconded by trustee Jones. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Sure. Trustee Burns, absent. Trustee Jones? Here. Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Zapp?
Here.
Trustee Sterling?
Present.
Trustee Dr. Wilson?
Here.
Trustee Burger? Trustee Sterling and Jones at the end of executive session. You should try and pause.
Let's move on to number three. Approval of the minutes. Village clerk, what do you have for us based on A through J?
I would like approval for the August 26th executive session to approve and hold, and also for the general proceedings for September 2nd. Reconvene a special meeting final budget review. The approval of the proceedings for December 9th, 2025 executive session will be taken back. The approval of the general proceedings for September 16th, public hearing budget, I'd like approval for that. Approval of general proceedings for September 16th. Special committee, I would like to remove the final two, F and G. The general proceedings for September 4th and 31st, we need to ask the special committee to take a look for another time.
May I have a motion to remove from a consent agenda item number B? We're removing that, and we will remove F and G. Hearing that, may I have a motion to approve through a consent agenda item A, item C, item D, and item E? May I have that motion, Chris?
So move.
It's been moved. May I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Johnson. Seconded by trustee Jones. Are there any questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Burns, absent. Trustee Jones? Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Zapp?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
And trustee Dr. Wilson?
Yes, except for item number C abstaining. So, we're gonna go through this motion again. And this time, when I ask for a consent agenda, if anyone see any reason to remove any item, meaning you will not be voting yea for it, then ask for it to be removed at that time. I'm going to ask for that motion again.
September 9th is the one I took off. That was the executive session. There's no minutes for the September 2nd. Back to him.
You asked for us to take, remove September the 2nd, clerk.
Oh, that makes sense. Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Give her a second, and please go over there.
That's what, let it go. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve by consent agenda items A, item D, and item E? May I have that motion?
So move.
Thank you. May I have a second? I'm sorry, who made the second? Thank you. We are getting ready to vote on a consent agenda looking at three items. We're looking at item A, 8/26/25 executive session, D, 9/16 public hearing, which was a budget, E, general proceedings for 9/16 special committee meeting. That's what we are voting on? No, we didn't go over September the 2nd. That was the one that you only had one copy of.
That was September 9th. September 2nd is a reconvene, discussion meeting, the final budget review. Those were, thank you.
Thank you.
What I did is I took a second and I put the 7th to the report budget.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Burns, absent. Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Zapp?
Okay. That's what I tried to re- yes.
Trustee Dr. Wilson?
Yes, but abstaining from B.
That's why I removed it.
Were you not here as-
I was not here this afternoon.
But this order nine. But let's just rephrase this, because when a mayor asks for consent, somebody's not there that day, then could you please say at the beginning that we're not doing consent?
That's what I just said. That's what I just said. You don't have to clarify for me. Yeah, but it's not a consent. Exactly, you can come back. We're on the consent agenda right now, trustee. I mean, a clerk. So I will go back. Thank you. So under the consent, now, may I have a motion to approve the general proceedings for 9/25 to reconvene a special meeting, final budget review? May I have a motion for item B?
So move.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Trustee Johnson and trustee Zapp. Clerk, please call the roll for item B.
Trustee Burns, absent. Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Zapp?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Wilson, abstaining.
Okay. That's how that goes. We were asked to remove at the very front end items F and G. We will move on to public comment, please. Anyone for public comment? Please stand in line now if you wish to give a public comment. So we have three individuals who will be giving public comments. Then I read this to you, three. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter concerning the business of the South Village municipality. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies, or rebuttals. I will respond to questions and comments as appropriate.
Okay, go ahead. I'm Francine Anderson, and I have some concerns. First of all, I continue to see upon this agenda that we are lacking some position, which is the finance department and the public works. And I am just wondering and concerned if you are planning on bringing back our previous public work director. He came to a meeting and asked and requested, so I don't know if this trustee board is looking forward to it or looking forward to it, or are you guys just gonna just pass it over and look forward to it employee? That is not, has not been addressed, and I am looking for some solution because it appears that this defense is still handling poor positions. He is the village manager or administrator. He's our public works person. He's the finance person. He's the president. So what are we gonna do, something about him getting everything? Because, guess what? That's the same position that Miss Renee's in in the previous administrations. One person doing everything. And some of the trustees that were a part of that administration really did not like that. And because she could not meet obligations, and this defense just left off $250,000.
Can you please not call names? Call positions, but not names. Thank you. Regain your time.
Miss, no, I'm not done. Can I have some of my time back?
How much time do you think you missed?
Uh-
Three seconds.
Nine seconds. You made a motion of three seconds. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Concerning this clerk letter that I see today that I would hope that you all will find some way to work together since your team at this administration is about unity.
What clerk?
There is no unity when I read this kind of letter saying that information is ill, well, from the clerk.
There might be one.
Did you turn it on?
Did you put a letter out?
Yes, you pointed.
Can you check their mic, please?
Is it on?
It's not on.
Oh, well.
Is it back there? Can you give me a copy, please?
Uh, they're calling, they're recording.
And I can still read a copy, ma'am.
Okay.
Jesus Christ.
Everybody's on hold, ma'am, without a mic.
We can get here, we might, I know that this report is.
I hope it comes down, will you?
I'm sorry. Before you start, let me address some of what Ms. Anderson said. Know that we have been going through, thank you, the process. We have been going through the process for hiring, and we will be hiring two of the positions that you've mentioned, and they should be forthcoming soon.
Can somebody give me a copy, please?
Ma'am, please, can you please give me this by the record? I have a copy of that. Otherwise, your mic is not gonna be on this video. Could you just give me-
I wanna see what them two reading. If they think something's right, I want my copy.
Okay.
So can somebody give me a copy from back there, please? If you don't mind?
If they're probably as I can.
We can read it to you, and y'all can read it.
I did it part and pass it to them.
I'm sorry, but hey.
I mean, I had heard-
Okay.
Read too.
Let's continue with public comment.
I hadn't read it.
Y'all be looking at. We ain't gonna go there.
She just asked that.
We ain't going there.
We're not.
Can we call our next person?
We're not.
Oh, I know we not.
I know that too.
Are you okay?
Oh, my God.
All right, I hope so. Say that needs a-
They did, they say this.
Okay. You doing that because of what she did in the executive session. Let's say that. Honestly. Because I never said your name. We gonna act right tonight.
I'm sorry. May we take a five-minute break?
It takes two, it takes-
May I have a motion? May I have a motion to recess?
She cast your paper, so therefore you included in the bill. So long, because look at the paper right there. I see her passport in it. So it's two papers, that's okay.
May I have a motion to recess?
So move.
What time is it?
What's your bottom?
What time is it? I have a motion.
I didn't hear it.
Trustee Jones, seconded. 8:14, you have a five-minute recess. I'm not sure if everybody's in this time. So, clerk, please, you might-
And we'll just let it go as it really, thank you.
So I will be reading my-
She's like, she's like, she's like.
Thank you. Because mine is still at home.
Yes. I just read it, and all I said was, and this is what I do. You didn't say it. Anybody not get a copy of this before I do my report is- I'm sure anybody can read it. You say you got a copy.
You so, but I have to get your name, I never said your name.
She said, "Now." Now.
You're a liar.
Now. Girl, hello.
You not about to give me that energy to say that. I'm scared of that. It's not a blue rap. If I wanna say your name, I'll say your name, but I tell me, just put it in. I said I didn't say your name. I said I didn't say your name. And if I hear it, oh, well, she gonna pull out and she hurt. Nothing.
Hold that.
Nothing. Can I go get a cigarette? Because she want this, she gonna get it. I ain't pulling punches with y'all. May I see you two?
Look, hey, you better put that light up over you that you got on your door.
I, I'm-
The night.
I'm not, I'm a gentleman.
I get, I wait till, I wait till, wait till me, get you.
That's what I'm working on. We- Yes, we got this. And by the way, that office there was just- And then some town support came about. They know they wrong, indeed, they can challenge, so she just didn't even tell us. We don't care. You say these.
Yep.
I don't see, I don't see, I don't see. She mad because he don't even have some money. She just think, oh, well, you know. You gonna lie to me, say that girl gonna say your name. Say your name. Yeah, because she gonna lie to me, say I said, I said that. Don't make that.
Zero. And how does it? Zero. Zero. Please, please, can we, please, guys, we need to get out of here. Please.
So move. So move. May I have a second?
Second.
Move the second thing?
Oh, okay. Who is we're gonna bring to this, each one? We'll call trustee Burns, it's still absent. Trustee Jones? Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Zapp?
Here.
Trustee Sterling?
Present.
Dr. Wilson?
Here.
Do you want to take your public comment?
David Smith, resident. First question is, I received a phone call today from a resident in South Village, and they were complaining that instead of their usual $103 water bill, their bill was upwards of almost $250. They said this is the second month in a row that this has happened. So my initial response, because I watch NBC Chicago, I asked them to check their water meter and see if it was installed backwards. They told me no. So, they're elderly, they couldn't make it tonight, so I just said I would speak on their behalf. And my question to you, Madam Mayor, is that what are you telling the residents who their meters are installed properly and they have new meters, but their water bills are still exceptionally high? Second question. There was a water main break on 222nd Street in Merrill over the weekend. Allegedly, it was reported on Saturday, and Public Works didn't come out until Monday. One of the residents on that block informed me that she was told that South Village wasn't gonna pay overtime in order to fix the issue. I would like to know, if we can't afford overtime right now, how are we gonna make it throughout the whole year? Next question. Who's in charge of public works? When things like this happen, who are people supposed to call? Because I would assume there's a chain of command, and everything shouldn't just go through the mayor. So, who's in charge of public works right now? When people have a public works issue, whether it's an emergency or even something basic, who are they supposed to speak to? Next question. Why isn't accounts payable on the back tonight? I've heard a lot about the copier issues that you guys are having in the back. If proven IT isn't honoring their service agreements, and if they're not getting the job done, are you guys in the process of looking for somebody else? And if not, why? Next few questions about this agenda tonight. Next few questions about this agenda tonight. Under item seven, petitions, agreements, and action items. A and B were never discussed during committee meetings. So unless you guys discuss them in executive session, I'm wondering how they made it to a board meeting without being discussed in a committee meeting? The clerk files. Is there any truth to this? That Public Works is removing files from the clerk's office? Just a question. And finally, regarding, and you may say you're not gonna answer this, I don't know. You haven't answered my question in a couple of weeks anyway. But regarding some of these pending litigation issues, wouldn't it be cheaper if we can't afford to pay for water main breaks on the weekend, why are we challenging the decisions of the Attorney General? What's more important? Everybody, I believe, in this room knows that there were errors made. Why would we spend thousands of dollars to fight them when we have more pressing issues? I'd rather pay for a water main break than a losing cause in circuit court.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Board of Trustees. David Fields, resident. Madam Mayor, I would like to know. Last Tuesday when we had the meeting, you didn't make an announcement about branches being picked up. And please, don't tell me anything about their marquee board out there, because nobody pays attention to their marquee board. But we had the meeting here. You went through a lot of things, you talked about a lot of things, but you never may mention that they would be out picking up branches. And then finding out, I ran into them yesterday, and that's how I found out they were out picking up branches. My second question is, the former Public Works Director Larry Gates stood up there and he made a statement that you said that if a certain person was fired, he was fired also. I would like to know, is there a true statement? And please remember, this is on record. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for all the comments. Moving on to number five. Branches and resolutions. May I have a motion for a resolution authorizing the purchase of two party apparatus from Stryker Sales Health and Nutrition. May I have a motion for a resolution authorizing the purchase of two party apparatus? Those are the same things that we discussed with the last meeting.
So move.
Trustee Burns, governor.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Seth?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Blackwellson?
Yes.
As we mentioned at last week's meeting, that it was a very short term time that had been approved and decided and agreed that if it was approved at this meeting, that it would be the first time on the third and line a temporary before any warning for the beginning of the tenth day. So hearing that, I am going to ask that this resolution be prepared and ready. What's the deadline? I know this is a question. I think three P M. Thank you. I'm going to ask that it be approved and ready for signature by the meeting. Moving on to B. I would like to call for a motion to approve the three million submitted ordinance amended section two that takes the hint of the municipal code of the village of South Village entitled standing committee. The only thing that has changed on that agenda is the names, the trusty names that were added on the front page and on the, on the vote papers. May I have a motion approved? The ordinance to standing committee.
So move.
May I have a second?
Second. Trustee Burns, asked her. Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Jones?
No.
Trustee Seth?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
No.
Trustee Blackwellson?
Yes.
Motion, please.
Thank you for the fact that motion did fail. And I'm going to just call to all of your red, redaction, redaction that we made in the past. About doing the final, although that's a standard standing committee, though that once again, we go to the town. If I'm not mistaken, we've been going down three times. And if it has been going down three times, I don't think that I should do it again. Yes, trustee Johnson?
I can't go to anything, I don't have a copy of it.
Trustee Johnson, we have looked at. Are you sure it's not in the title of the document?
It's like, not both good, but later my fact.
Put that together, man.
I have a voice back.
But you work together, man. You put that together, man.
I said my fact.
Okay, you put that, and I can't, basically, what you did, because mayor's doing the taxes now.
Yes, I am. But that's, that's more going to, this is natural, it is my natural matter. And I see your point, you can come in, so just stop and say.
No, cause I don't do that. After the meeting, you can see my packet, but in the middle of the meeting, I don't think that's sufficient.
Moving on to this, my natural matter, so that motion to approve the transfer of payroll and account payable distribution in the combined amount of two hundred and forty-three thousand six hundred and eighty-three thousand sixty cents and optimize the finance to be paid. After the second, we did the second, then you can ask first. I'm okay. Yes, you can. May I have a motion to approve transfer of payroll and account payable distribution in the combined amount of two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, six hundred, two hundred and forty-three, six hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixteen cents and optimize the finance department to be paid.
So move.
If then, will trustee Johnson, may I have?
It's not the opposite.
Trustee Johnson, I'm sorry.
Um, may I have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Are there any questions?
Yes, yes.
Um, I think we have a little more clarification.
What kind of clarification you doing on the A T?
Constellation Energy Energy, that's a two hundred and forty-four thousand. The I D E L A, seven hundred and four.
Wait, wait, wait.
Use your mic.
Okay, yeah.
Can I give you a little time, so, Rose?
So now, what's the first one?
Um, I said the Constellation Energy
Okay.
Two hundred and twenty-four thousand. I said it's a hundred and fifty-one in over. Asked her. Trying to figure out whether they paid, I have a few of them, I might have seen off this in my packet.
I'm gonna say. Uh, thank you. Uh.
The Barak, the forty-nine, the Barak.
This, you want to go one by one? I'll wait, go ahead, thank you. Uh. When your agent report, both across the time, it tells you how many days, days, that you should give your agent has been presented. So what this is saying is that from what you just mentioned, that those invoices are a hundred and fifty-one days or more over, okay? So that means those invoices did not get the consent filed to now. You had received an email to that check when I sent it last week. And you told me, oh, you're sorry. It's with, you're not receiving. This is one of the instances that you've been talking about in terms of emails not transferred over to the joint. But this is, this is a classic example.
What, what is this?
That is a water company that provides water and services to the water department. You have another one? Did that answer a question?
Uh, let me go say one, um, ask a question for you.
Uh, I thought you did mention another one.
I did mention another one. Um, the Barak, the forty-nine?
Yes.
Is that like a law firm, like what?
That is a law firm that is another law firm who were treating this for, for approval to be paid. And the agency once again, those, that invoice is over a hundred and fifty-one days old. It is not approved. And if I can remember correctly, we have a cat that I'm going to pay for hour to its earnings. And those invoices sort of more than double the, the rate that is included, not the, for us to be paid. Who are they suing this, about this one? They weren't suing, they were definitely suing us, and they took the person in. And thus, it is still under litigation. I'm not at liberty to state that, to say that, sir.
Yeah, yes, I would go with it. It's members of the white, they billed out with seven hundred and ten dollars an hour.
Yeah, it's a two hundred dollar. Yeah, hour rate is two hundred and fifty-three dollars, over seven hundred and an hour. Anything else? Was, uh, trustee Johnson?
Or the agent report under the law firm of answering the link. We approved, when you approved one point one million dollars. Answering link should have been on that accounts payable. So the way I look at it, they're saying they're overdue a hundred and fifty-one days and over. So you can tell me that our interim administrator never paid them? Will we approve them within the accounts payable for one point one million dollars? A couple of months ago? Cause we shouldn't have them on our accounts payable now at this time.
If you can notice, a draw card. And it's a clinical. But current is ten thousand, six hundred and two dollars and eighty cents. If you look at the top, it says more than sixty-one to ninety days. That's the twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. And then if you look at one fifty-one and over, that's fifteen to ninety-four fifty-nine. Why that was not paid, I'm not certain. Why the ninety-one to one hundred days were not paid? I don't know. Where the sixty-one to ninety days is concerned, that is still under litigation. And there were questions and concerns about some of the charges there. So that was not paid. And then current, the ten thousand, six hundred and two, the last thirty days. They're operating at this point as a third party attorney. They are not an attorney for the village of South Village per se. They were assigned out by the head. That one is still under litigation as well, with a lot of experts that we had discussed previously in close session, where the system questioned some of the experts that were called to me. That's how we come to the balance of seventy-four thousand. That's repeated seventy-four thousand. By add, uh, the third day, the thirty-one to sixty day, the sixty-one to ninety days, and so forth and so forth.
So.
No, you asked about million dollars.
My question was, why has the answer been paid after one point one million dollars when their name was on that accounts payable? And we shouldn't have no bills from answering link at this time?
Yes, you will continue to have bills.
So my question to you was, what is the interim village administrator doing? Is he picking and choosing when to pay answering link? Can you answer that, please?
I think you have a question. I guess you don't have a question. I just said, they have been drawn on, they are not out of attorneys. They have been drawn on as a third party attorney. Where third party attorneys are concerned, we do not get to pick and choose who those attorneys are. I mean, it's just like the item that you're going to see a little bit later on the agenda twenty-second, where it was assigned to a third party. And then we have made three quarters again. We didn't go through the, with answering and playing. We moved from in the past, they were our quarter boards. They're no longer our quarter boards, they are third parties at times. Okay? So we were not in favor of some of the charges. And I'm not at liberty to say that some of the charges were that were expressed at that time. The reason why they weren't, it wasn't due to that. And you think that, trustee, uh. Mr. Sterling, thank you. I have no question for saying Constellation Energy. We have that, that two hundred and forty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-six, uh, seven minutes. So I want to know, I asked for information as far as payment history, invoices, for at least for the time, at least twenties, like twenty months, twenty, twenty-four months. And it's just not being found. So I asked for this information.
Maybe not being found, it's just not.
It's just not being found. That's what I was told. And it's not on the unit report now. But I did ask for these invoices, payment history, any kind of correspondence that we needed as far as either we were in the burden, being cut off, or anything saying that we were delayed, we're delaying the payment. So I, I haven't received that, and it hasn't been done.
I've not seen it. I've seen your questions.
I've seen your emails. But no, I've not seen this one. Other than what you said. Trustee Johnson, I'm going to call on you. If you ask me a question and does not allow me to answer as you just did, I will not even attempt to answer your questions. You decide. If you ask your questions, if the board to listen, if I attempt to do any of it, you make that determination, how you move forward, I can play.
I'm not playing, I'm speaking for the residents. So anyway, going back to answering link, I found a copy, which is dated May thirteen, twenty twenty-five, from answering link. This total, and I remember this amount, we paid it out of under one point one million dollars. Sixty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and three cents, right here. here. These numbers ain't adding on here. They shouldn't have this amount on here that's owed and due. It's not making sense. So I don't know if the interim village administrator is paying answering the claim, but we approve for them to get paid. Why they are getting paid, I have no idea.
And I have no idea.
Well, the copy's right here, it's in black or white.
And you know what, I can't see that.
Thank you, you pass it to the next one, please, thank you so much.
Thank you, I take it on.
Um, but I need that conversation.
She, she looks in there.
I have a question. Yes. Yeah, yes, I have a question, though.
What about this Olson working, like is it twenty-nine hundred? I can, do you mind? She's questioning, uh, your opinion. There was, um, questions that we're, we're still resolving. They are our board attorneys currently, but filled with some charges in their I M L that we're questioning, and we are awaiting resolution.
There were certain charges that were questioned under invoices, if there was a phone call or correspondence, uh, the mayor, the building manager, the answer source, who knows detail, you know, who's, who's, uh, spoken to about what's happening. So, you know, putting that feeling, you know, you don't have as much information on there, but also there's something to fore it to a certain extent. So we're working on it, and we're looking back, and everyone is talking on, because options to give, go back a number of months, you see, if you're going to hold the builder so that, whatever, certain office didn't work, we got to follow back up, and there's a meeting, but we're right now.
We get billed for phone calls, we get billed, and this is not just our board, this is any of them. Will they do their email from, we give you, maybe five, six minutes for us, or to us? We're billed, and we not pay, it's not mandatory. Every point of contact is billed. So, are there any other questions on the interim report that I can answer? Or that I don't have a response to? If not, then I'm going to go back to the motion, that was on the floor. That was motion by trustee Johnson, second, not trustee Johnson. I don't know if that, uh.
Motion by trustee, by the reason, seventy-nine.
I'm sorry, I'm wrong, uh, number one.
Trustee Burns absent, trustee Jones?
No.
Trustee Johnson?
No.
Trustee Sapp?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
No.
Trustee Dr. Winston?
Yes. And we have. That motion failed, and we will not repay accounts payable to the county. Okay? Moving on to petition to bring an action against, motion to pursue corrective actions against C M T T for breach of contractual services in the provision of I T services. May I have a motion? And a second?
Second. I would like to take it. I took it for consideration.
Please give me an opportunity to make the next statement, please. Thank you very much.
I have to put you to a motion, that's a power of entry, thank you. And somebody's taken a motion, and take a.
A motion, and a second on the floor. Are there any comments or discussions?
Now, you may say what you want. I would like to table it as a further consideration.
You can ask that without sound, so, and you did.
Because you're trying to tell me I'm not material, major, I'm working to see if there's any, I'm not material.
I know that, I want to show.
Okay, well, let's continue, let's do my table.
There's a motion to the table, is your second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
First of all. Trustee Burns absent, trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
No.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Dr. Winston, no.
That motion carried. Moving on to the man of a motion to pursue corrective action to improve salary from the former acting treasurer for lack of services rendered. May I have that motion? All right, yes. May I have a second? Second. It's been practically been seconded.
I would like to table.
For further consideration, please, so that you, are there, it has been practically been seconded to, that motion has been practically been seconded. Are there any discussions or questions for that motion?
I would like to table for further consideration.
I did not call in the trustee Johnson. So now, shall we do this, like, because you are seeing trustee.
And I know, I did the first time, you didn't recognize me, I'll do it again, as long as I'm a caller.
Right, yeah, trustee Johnson, about me.
I did, you didn't recognize me, I had it up twice. Should I play it, we caught back?
No, you can.
All right, so that's what you're moving in, come on.
Thank you, trustee Johnson.
I would like to table for, until further consideration.
Thank you, there's a motion to the table. Second. I'm sorry, who said it?
Trustee Johnson. Trustee Burns is absent, trustee Jones? Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
No.
Trustee Dr. Winston? Trustee Sterling?
Yes. Thank you. That motion carried, is tabled. And so that I know, generally, we tabled something, you're tabling it for a specific time period, are you tabling for a specific time, uh, period, thread, tape on what?
We're gonna table this until we hear from our interim village administrator or from the law firm, which will be discussed in that session.
So that's dependent additional information?
Yes.
Thank you. There's only two words. Okay, so may I have a motion to sign, to sign an agreement letter in place of Michael O'Neal? Okay, that's the, 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 the. Cudillis? Cudillis versus Village Salt Village, which is T D A L, case number twenty-four C B zero four three one seven. May I have that motion?
So move.
Second. May I have a second, please? This is the move to second, I, Johnson, Amy Trump, um, are there any questions? Or is there? Carry on, first, please, follow up.
Trustee Burns absent, trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Trustee Sapp?
No.
Trustee Dr. Winston?
Yes. Would you carry? Mayor's report, and I'm going to ask that people do not write. But I wrote my mayor's report down before I got to you, and before we went to what we went to, what we've been going through. My mayor's report was to give thanks to the board, to people in the board, saving the nature of our meetings, as they have been so good and so positive of late, don't they? I was born to say that you have been respectful, that our board has shown decorum, and more so than anything, all of our trustees have been participating in discussion, and they have been very viable participation, and I was just going to be one of the operators because I saw as, uh, noted word, saw, S A W, S. I want to say something else, that unbeknownst to me, the board decided that she would put her report on the back table, and she still wants to read it. I don't want to get into another shouting act, so I'm going to allow her to read, even though I serve the most beautiful day. The board had not seen, a lot of what's on here are untruths. Some of it is true, but the majority of it is not. And is it proper that the board would read this, and is it beneficial? Will it make us a better board by her reading this? And even by her passing it out? Absolutely not. But if that is what is decided, to present herself in that manner, I'm going to let her do that, just as she has done some other times, and in emails to trustees, my business, I leave an office, and this is an office. I'm going to say that, and I'm going to move on, but I'm not ready to call on her yet. I want to talk to you about some of the meetings that I had, and one in particular, because we have so many businesses to come for us, to expand numerous moments, then gone through emails where I've been granted that people go with our lawsuit next to me, because I caused a company who wanted to come to this village to bring the cannabis dispensary, that they spent millions of dollars. And now I'm lying. I spoke with the owner of that plaza and his son last week. I spoke to the owner of Black Salt the week before. As we saw, talking to the owner of Black Salt and the company, and then last week, if you remember, we had pulled an agenda item off because a business owner who was supposed to come present to you about a business that was supposed to go into Black Salt, she signed the real vibes, the same page that Mr. Payner's written, as well as the current leasing of Black Salt. Black Salt still has a lease at that location. And as long as Black Salt has a lease, then that means the companies that have been coming here, owe, they owe for them, stating that one time they wanted to this, another time they wanted to that, and they wanted to all of this expansion, and I can't help them saying, they've not done the diligence, they do not have the documentation for us to afford. Please, hear me, when I tell you, Black Salt still has a lease on that property, and as long as they have a lease on that property, no other business can go in here. Their lease right now is, the time is limited, okay? But for now, they still have a lease, and the owner, Mr. Payner, has not given it. So, leasing of Black Salt, he is saying, hey, that he's going to meet his deadline, and that he will be opening Black Salt. So, even though we've gone through the zoning board commission, we did a letter, we hoped that we would ask to jump through, for now, it was off the line. Because I think that if he was so busy talking to the dispensary, he failed to talk to the owner of the plaza, he does not have his property up his sleeve. He will let us know, if he goes on us, so that then, and we may disagree, so that then, we won't bring people, because we're trying to say they want to open this, this business at that location, as you can see, it's a hot spot, but it's not there, but it's not there. And regardless, but what if we bring out, see, somebody had, and pushed before, it can't be done without Mr. Payner's sale, is going to sell, or lease, this right to that particular business. So can we put this to the end of the matter? Thank you. And with that, I am going to, no, one other, and that, our five, six new activities that will be taking place, coming up this year, that is sponsored, there's a different sponsor by the building, and that's on a sheet like this, know that I'm going to send another email inviting volunteers to join us on any of these groups, and almost some already paid that stuff, the best plan will be assist us with these projects, it would still be a lot of your attendance. Thank you, trustee, I'm going to go first.
Thank you, mister mayor. First of all, there's no A P in the back of the table because it wasn't placed in my box. Normally, it's placed in my box to distribute to the residents. I don't know why it wasn't there, and I apologize, um, but I'll make sure that, I don't know what the reason is, maybe they stopped doing that. The soft talk is in the back, um, it is my intention now to get it out more closer to the first of, uh, the month. I'm just hoping for more participation, so I don't have to stall its releases much, waiting for, um, information from the department heads and the board members, because the whole part of the soft talk is to communicate with residents. Um, we're working diligently on the website, and we are now posting the agendas on the website. Soon, we will be seeing the minutes back on the website, and the ordinance is back on the website. Once I get files that I can, uh, set, send in PDF form to the website, that is my goal. What I've been trying to do is recreate my trustee files, so that I have files for the clerk's office, but I'd rather use the official copies from the clerk's office. Um, I just wanted to comment, um, trustee, um, Jones and I, I talked to her today, so she knows I'm getting ready to say this. I was so impressed by her report last week, um, such integrity, such, such feeling about when she went to I M L, and what she learned from there, and the professionals that she dealt with, and I, it really just grabbed me that this is the way we all need to feel, and the way we all need to act, because we can't work together unless we work together. We're not supposed to work against each other, we're supposed to work with each other, for the good of our residents. Which leads me to the village clerk's report, and the reason I did put her on the back table, because oftentimes when I begin to talk, I get cut off, and this is very important to me. I was the village clerk for eight years in the past, as some of you know. I am the village clerk now, and the integrity of the village clerk's files is of utmost importance to me. If it's not to anybody else, it has to be to the village clerk. I must alert residents that the integrity of the village clerk's files has been compromised. Upon entering my office on April 28th, I soon noticed that several files were missing. I assumed my office was part of the shred everything campaign from the previous administration. In reality, the files were being stored in the conference room down the hall. I asked several times to have the files returned to the clerk's office, to no avail. At the beginning, assistants from non-staff members attempted to create files with agendas and minutes in them with no supporting documentation. After waiting for over months, I retrieved the files from the conference room this Sunday by myself, and posted a note that no one should enter my office without my written consent. This morning, the files were removed from my office by the public works department by direction of the mayor. Why are the clerk's files being kept from the village clerk? Where is the transparency, especially among the two highest ranking officials? Why did the mayor prepare the agenda in packets without notifying the clerk last Friday? While I was in the process of preparing the final agenda, the mayor was in the process of preparing a packet of her own, without my knowledge. Why is the mayor showing such blatant disrespect for the clerk? As she just said a moment ago, she has no respect for the clerk. There is none, she just said it again, none. And she's laughing, she thinks it's funny. There's more, but I'm to address. This is wrong on many levels. No one has the authority to evade my office and disturb public documents, most especially the mayor. She's my office. The integrity of my office means a lot to me. If someone comes to me and says, why can't you answer this for you? Where are the documents for this request? And I go to them and say, those documents do not exist. They're going to look at me like, why not clerk? Where are the documents? I want my files returned. The previous clerk announced 13 months ago she was running for mayor, that gave her ample time to clear out her personal items. She gave up this position, the residents voted me in. Let me do my job respectfully, village clerk Debbie Williams. The main point of this idea is, I still don't have files from years ago that should be in my office as the current village clerk. I am unable to perform my job because I don't have the tools to work with. When I left my job as the village clerk eight years ago, and the current mayor became the current village clerk, and I asked her, can I help you at the beginning to get, you know, get settled? And she told me in a very profane way to basically get out of her office. And the last thing I think I would have been able to do was to go back in her office and take anything out of there after that moment. So please, residents, understand, when we take, when we change positions, we assume the responsibilities of that position, not only moving forward, but from the past. And I hope you all support me. I want my files back, and I'm not stopping here. I am notifying the Illinois State Police and everybody else that'll listen. I want my files back. Thank you.
Are they your files, or are they the village's?
I am the village clerk. They're not your files. Are they the, are they the, are they the mayor, are they the mayor's files? No!
I'm calling for the deputy council officer, sir. I would say, would I read that in South Florida? Sir? That?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, Mayor, I was trying to get the microphone going. If you could just pass that out. There's no real need to go through this memorandum in great detail, but the mayor asked me to put this together. It just briefly goes over the duties and responsibilities of the village clerk, the mayor, and the board of trustees. Apparently, there's been an issue with putting together the agenda and the packet, distributed into...
Excuse me? I'm sorry, sir. Is there one more something? One more question? I have totally come in so...
Thank you, Mayor. So, as far as, clearly, the person who's responsible for putting together the agenda is the mayor. The mayor of every community sets the agenda, sets the tone of how the meetings are going to go, and works with staff, including the village clerk and the department heads, to put those items together. The items are all supposed to be distributed, or sent to the village clerk, who then puts together the packet, makes copies, and makes sure that the agenda is properly posted in a timely manner, and that all the department heads and the trustees get copies of the full agenda and packet in a timely manner, so it could be reviewed prior to the meeting. And speaking with the mayor, we thought that there was a resolution done in the past, and it kind of seemed familiar to me, too. I don't know if anyone remembers it, but my office searched, and we couldn't find any resolution that was adopted whereby if people are requesting, if trustees or department heads are requesting an item to be put on the agenda, or include materials for the packet, to get it in a timely manner, because you're always rushing to get everything put together. We hear issues with the copy machine, issues with mailboxes, and just to allow sufficient time to put everything together. We weren't able to find that, but I would suggest that something be drawn up. Your meetings are on Tuesdays. Going into the weekend before, I suggest either Thursday or early, then set time on Friday morning, that all items have to be submitted to the mayor, requests to be put on the agenda, including the packet materials, so it allows time to copy and put everything together. It could be tailored and drafted any way, you know, all of you want it to be drafted, to allow sufficient time, but I think that has to be done. It's done in a lot of communities. I'm surprised it wasn't done. Maybe I was thinking of some other municipalities that we did it for, but we couldn't locate anything for Soft Village. But that's basically what the memo's about, and a suggestion is to give it to the mayor or the village administrator, we draft an easy resolution to set those timeframes, so that there's not a big rush on Friday afternoon, or people going into the weekend, if the copy machine breaks down, or people are going to be out of town, just so everyone gets all the materials in a time, time to review it. No later than Sunday evening, you know, you should have it at least 48 hours before the meeting, you shouldn't be getting things right before the meeting. Obviously, that happens from time to time, if a vendor or presenter gives information just before a meeting, you can't help that, but obviously, the more time you have to review anything, it's better for everyone. So that's my suggestion.
Thank you, sir. Another question here? All I can predict is your report is you have made one there, here, here, lady. And we appreciate you, and we continue to look forward to all that we have been doing in the last season, assuming that you are making a difference.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're making a sizable difference in terms of services and the upgrades that are providing to our community and to our residents now.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Clerk, and Board of Trustees. I do have a lot to report, but I'm going to try to be succinct. First off, Merrill Avenue water main replacement, construction is continuing. The contractor is now working on the installation of the residential water services. The project is scheduled to be, or the contract is, ends in early December, but the contractor is well ahead of schedule and should be done in fairly short order. I think after the next couple of weeks, they'll just be mainly working on restoration issues, but the bulk of the actual water main work will be complete. The Build Up Cook Fire Hydrant Replacement Project, construction continues on that project as well. To date, the contractors replaced eight fire hydrants. They have not, they're not working this week. They will be back out next week. From my understanding, they will be replacing eight additional hydrants next week. And would you like me to talk now about the valves?
Before going there, may I ask you, you mentioned rural, and rural, I felt the comments knowing the issue on rural street?
Mm-hmm.
And I know for the most part, most of my Sunday was impacted with water issues on rural street. Is it the same block, the 222nd, 100 block rural, that did water main replacements, water main breaks, and that sometime, and fire hydrants all at the same time? And so at some point in time, can one impact the other?
Yes. Basically, I did talk to our resident engineer who's on site doing the construction observation, and the breaks that are occurring are on the existing old main that is about to be taken out of service. That was, you know, that main has experienced multiple breaks over the years, which is the main reason that's being replaced. That main is expect, I believe, the south side of the main, south of, I'm sorry, is it 222nd? Yeah, 222nd. That, from what I understand, was going to be out of service as of the end of the day today. The north side of the, the north portion of the project, those residential services are still being installed, so once that work is complete, then the north side of that existing old main will be taken out of service. Then you will just have a brand-new eight-inch ductile iron main, and those, those problems should cease.
Thank you.
Okay. I did, I did receive an email this afternoon from interim administrator Finch. He's not here tonight, and the mayor did ask that one of us discuss it in our reports, and that is, in relation to the Build Up Cook Fire Hydrant Replacements Project, you have to have good valving and the ability to shut off and isolate portions of the main in order to remove an existing hydrant out of service in place and replace it with a new hydrant. There are multiple hydrants on the north side of the village where they cannot achieve a good shutdown. They would have to take large portion of the village out of, the northeast portion of the village out of service to do these replacements, and it would be quite the burden on the residents. In addition, if there were to be a fire in this portion of the village, the fact that you can't achieve good shutdowns and isolate portions of the main would, would just wreak havoc. And so, one of the items that we've been fighting, I guess is the right word, this, as part of this hydrant replacement project, is being able to achieve good shutdowns because of the condition of the existing valves. They're just old and aged, and in some places, not functional. And so, one of the things that we would like to do is to install probably about five exist, or five, they call them EZ valves, so they're like cut-in valves that you, you put onto an existing main, so that we can achieve shutdowns and not only be able to remove and replace these hydrants that the county is, has provided, but also, it would provide a long-term positive effect for the village to be able to have these valves in place now, and be able to provide shutdowns and isolate water mains in the event of a break, in the event of a fire, just for the future. And so, I know Mr. Finch did request a proposal from one of the contractors that has used often the village for water main breaks, and so that was what he had presented to the mayor for consideration. And I don't know if he wanted me to speak anymore about that item.
I have, I want to be careful of that.
So I think, time is of the essence, just because this project is in process. I think the sooner that this work could be, you know, if the village was going to move forward with, with installing these valves, the sooner the better. I know there is additional work that can be done, additional areas where fire hydrants will be installed, but I believe they wanted to have this project done by the end of the year, and so, in order to, to replace these valves in the northeast, or, I'm sorry, these hydrants in the northeast corner of the village, you would want to have these valves in place. Otherwise, like I said, you would have to shut down a large portion of the village to be able to install these hydrants, and then, again, you have an issue. If you have a water main break, you're basically having to shut down a large portion of the village just to be able to, to fix the break.
Do we have the luxury time to have this on, it's on stage during the whole meeting?
Yes. Yes.
Is it something that would require your help, or whatever you sent to me this evening, not that they would read it, and that you're going to have to buy?
Right.
Or is it sort of self-explanatory?
I believe it's self-explanatory, and I'm sure that, you know, Mr. Finch is the one who is working with the, with the contractor to get the quote, so I'm sure that he's, you know, has experience in public work, so I'm sure that that's something that he could cover.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Then my last item is the Build Up Cook Sidewalk Replacement Project. So this project, which will include the removal and replacement of damaged sidewalk on Galene Avenue, Cynthia Avenue, 215th Place and 217th Place, in the vicinity of Wagner School, will be set for construction. I just talked to Cook County this afternoon. I did want to give the village the good news that up to this point, they were only going to be removing the damaged sections of sidewalk. They told me this afternoon that they've found enough funding that they're going to be removing and replacing the entire length of sidewalk, which is honestly a rarity that you, that you have, you're able to remove an entire length of sidewalk like that. It's usually just pull out the, the broken areas, the most damaged areas, and replace, but they are going to be removing and replacing the sidewalk for the entire length of Galene, like I said, between 215th Place and 218th Street, and then Cynthia Avenue from 215th Place to 217th Place. And then a small portion of 215th Place, right in front of the school, and then 217th Place between Cynthia and Galene. They informed me today that they are planning to mobilize and start next week, so I will be distributing the door hangers to the village tomorrow for, so that they can be posted. They're going to start on the west side of Galene Avenue. The one thing that, and we will have something posted on Facebook as well, but the one thing that I did want to let the residents know is that because they will be replacing the entire length of the sidewalk, those affected residents are not going to have access to be able to get their cars in and out for approximately 10 days, because they will remove the, the entire length of the sidewalk, so there'll be a huge, you know, hole. And then they'll be replacing the sidewalk, and they'll have to give adequate time for curing. So, like I said, there will be a door hanger that will be coming out, hopefully in the next day, that provides more information. I ask on behalf of the village that residents bear with them, because you will, it will be quite the improvement. And then I'll be working with public, or with the police department and fire to just notify them ahead of time. We're going to make sure that parking is only allowed on one side to allow for emergency vehicle access. And that concludes my report. If there's no questions.
Is that not one of the things? But it was, we're really not upset. You remember, you and I, we walked up the gas, the red street, and we were looking at sidewalks, and we were saying, oh, do you think they're persistent? And then she said, oh, I don't know. I mean, I can put in, but it's really not that bad. And it's like, well, it doesn't make sense to do this payment here, and this one has some cracks in it already, and to have so discovered, you know, what I was discussing? Work with them, work with them, work with them. We want the final project to be very pleasant. Yes, some of those payments, I mean, it's like this park in between ones of, very unsafe. But we want safe, she wants safety, but we want appealing as well, actually. And so, me burning up that game with you, I think it was worth it, and I thank you for all your effort. Can we get a little bit of that? I'm asking the question, is that right? How about this, I see a grant. Can we, let's apply for this, and let's apply for that. And she just, whatever you say, you know, if that's what she's saying, can we, did we tell them about the two or five grants that we presented, don't you want to go with that, three of them? Yes. Okay? Okay, that we just found that out not too long ago. Yes, just to say.
I have a question for Melanie. The valves that are broken, and that you're going to put the, with basically like a sharp one, don't you still have to turn the water off in those sectors to do that?
So I'm not exactly sure that, how the contractor actually installs the valves, but I do believe that they install them while, they can install them while in service. Chief, do you know if that's correct? The EZ valve? Right, I'm not, I'll have to, I'd have to, to be honest with you, I'd have to get back to you on that, because I'm not exactly sure how it's installed, but I do know that it's installed on the existing main. I know in some cases it can be um, installable, the main is still active, but I would have to get back to you. I will, chuck that out and get back to you.
And all I can say is, when you ask for service, when you ask for any treatment, sometimes it's going to cause a little bit of pain. When you go to the doctor, and what they're doing to make you well, sometimes they have to give you a shot. And depending on where the shot is, it can be long-lasting pain, and especially if it's a oil-based, you know, that patient, in your, it takes a long time to heal. If we want to seek justice, which is coming our way, coming our way, we have to be willing to suffer just a little bit of pain, actually. You can't have it any other way. And a lot of times when I write on South Village emails, I just keep begging and appealing for people to be patient and understanding. We have to go through some more than breaks. We have to endure it, because they may not be able to finish everything immediately. And I think that those of you who come to this meeting, and those of you who are here now, I would just ask you to be ambassadors for us and not masters. You un, you should understand, now, all of this stuff can happen overnight. We need to be patient, our residents need to be patient, our residents need to be encouraged, because they're not here, and don't hear of any of this. But it's not a period that she comes before us, that she does not give us one of the offerings to our much stronger infrastructure. We have not done this much to improve the boroughs of South Village, and I have no idea how many of you is. And we just need to take advantage and not give up anything. Because it's much all worth it, given. So please, let's stop entertaining all of the uglies and the naysayers, unless you want us to just shut down everything and let it go back to where it used to be. Come on, let me move on. I digress. This is not the floor, but do you have a report that you wish to be, and she's saying?
No, don't worry.
Don't worry, just, now, I got a question, Chief, um.
No.
Thank you. Go on, finance, uh, we need to check on, uh, the record, I didn't hear from him. You know what else I'm talking about, this works. You're going to read her report? Did she, uh, turn it in? You got it turned in by Friday?
No.
Okay, this is what I'm going to ask, and I appreciate your willingness. We can wait till the next one, the next four days. Thank you. So, comments from your trustees? Your comments now, if you have a report, an IML, please feel free to give that. Talk to us about the sessions if you want to, and you'll hopefully be there to handouts for us. Um, and you'll give details if you're there. Trustee Lawrence is not here? Trustee Jessica, do you have anything for us?
Yes, I'm going to do my IML, um, report. So, from September eighteenth through September twenty-first, I attended several classes at the IML conference. I learned a lot about the rules and regulations regarding how to properly govern a municipality. The class that I found the most interesting was called Elevate Your Leadership. The class focused on several leadership styles, personal growth, and a belief in other potentials. The classes have a discussion, the class had a discussion on the importance of leadership development, which is done, can increase harmony amongst staff and community outcomes, and create enhancement, engagement between elected officials, village staff, and other residents. There was a segment on the importance of relationship development, and the importance of trust between the staff, elected officials, and the residents. Our moderator stressed that good leadership should be results-driven, and should base their credibility on achievements instead of titles. The class ended with some fun interaction activities. During the conference, I was also able to, um, build strong relationships with several municipalities in the surrounding area, along with several from the northern suburbs of Chicago, and some from south of Springfield. I'm glad that I was able to take advantage of the opportunity to network, learn, and gain so much new information. I'm so looking forward to next year's conference to continue my growth as an elected official. So at this moment, I would want to say thank you to the residents for allowing me to attend this year's IML conference. Thank you so much.
Were you able to just fill in, uh, handouts or would you like to, so she would hear?
Yes, I will turn it in to the clerk when I turn on the cord, and I'll make sure you have a copy.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on, uh, trustee Jennifer Jones? Anything for us today?
Well, I gave a report to ask for shifts, um, so I have just wanted to say, let's try to listen together. Let's respect each other's votes, let's, uh, uh, let's respect each other. Tonight has been a bit disappointing. I'm glad that you did just say that, because leadership is hard for the, um, uh, speaking of, you said that, you know, respect for, uh, our, uh, but, I believe that, let's try to move forward in a different, positive ways, okay? That's all.
Thank you very much. And this is the second meeting of vote that you've given last year, so I know that you're, um,
I mean, it's, it's harder to get out of your seat.
And we're hoping that people are, I was looking for, trustee Sad?
Uh, no report.
Thank you, trustee Sterling?
Yes. Um, I had the honor of attending the one hundred twelfth Illinois Municipal League Conference. As a newly-elected official, it was an incredible experience to connect with peers from across Illinois, gain knowledge, and bring back tools to better serve the residents of South Village. One of the highlights was wit, was witnessing history as Mayor Sheila Thomas Currie of Matson was sworn in as the first African-American woman to serve president of IML in its one hundred twelfth year history. I want to extend my congratulations to her. Uh, throughout the conference, I attended multiple sessions. They were both informative and eye-opening. I attended the first, what was the TIF one-on-one in redevelopment sessions, and this covered statutory requirements, eligible costs, surplus distribution, and ethical versus unethical uses of TIF funds. I also learned about more about TIF bonding authority and the proper role of joint review boards. Uh, the second session I had was the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, and this was just focusing on funding opportunities for wastewater and drinking water projects, uh, which would include the grants addressing emerging contaminants. Third was a municipal tune-up session, and this discussed compliance, administration, and regulatory best practices for local governments. I also attended the public corruption in local government, exploring both criminal and non-criminal strategies for preventing and addressing misconduct. And last but not least, I attended the leadership ethics. Also, um, that's the elevate leadership, uh, session, and they were two powerful sessions that emphasized servant leadership, elevating our leadership through personal growth and values, and ensuring compliance with state ethics requirements such as advanced political activity restrictions and executive session confidentiality. Each of these sessions deepened my understanding of both the opportunities and the responsibilities that come with being a public servant. I'm excited to apply what I learned to strengthen transparency and accountability and leadership here in South Village. The conference was not only educational, but also inspiring, and I look forward to attending again next year.
Wonderful, thank you. Did you have any full, uh, any, uh, standouts?
Yeah, most of the ones, the sessions that I attended, I pulled people's hands.
Sure. Thank you. Last but not least, trustee Thompson?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, fellow trustees, residents, and leaders. Uh, I also attended the IML Illinois Municipal League Conference, and attended several, uh, classes and courses, beginning with, uh, overview of risk management. Uh, during this session, I had the opportunity to learn practical strategies of how the village can manage and reduce risk in our community, uh, safety training for public work staff, first responders, and municipal employees to prevent accidents, uh, OSHA compliance, ensuring that our workplace meets the Illinois safety standards to protect employees and residents, return-to-work program, helping injured staff safely resume duties, uh, reducing long-term absence, risk assessment and policy review, identifying potential hazards in facilities like the community centers or parks, and updating policies to prevent incident, claim management and incident investigation, responding effectively to accidents or property damage to reduce financial loss. Implementing these, uh, practices from this course will help protect our residents, staff, and municipal resources while promoting a safer and more resilient community. I also attended a session regarding public corruption. This session highlighted how to identify and address public corruption in local government. Key examples included fraudulent spending, misuse of public funds, author, unauthorized travel, and this was conducted and guided from the Illinois State Police Department experts. Uh, emphasized practical steps to prevent misconduct, to ensure transparency and accountability in our community. Another one was the Open Meetings Act. Uh, this session covered the FOI and the Open Meeting Act emphasizing how to share information responsibly and transparently, uh, including providing meeting minutes, budget reports, contracts, correspondence to the public, responding properly to FOI requests, avoiding private discussions of public business. This attended also provided certification, uh, for attending, and I have received my certificate to the city clerk. Also strengthening municipal budgets through retail growth. This session focused on boosting municipality revenue through targeting business development, emphasizing retail and restaurants attractions, using case studies, and a site-wise analysis. I identified what South Village currently has and what is needed to attract businesses, increased sales tax, and leverage grant opportunities for substantial growth. Also attended session on, with older persons, trustees, and council members. This session here, we all engaged in question and answers, discussion key topics such as effective collaboration with colleagues, voting with integrity, strategies for navigating responsibilities as a new trustee. This session provided practical guidance for leading with confidence and accountability. Also attended financial benefits of effective infrastructure management. This session highlighted strategies for managing high-cost infrastructure, like transportation, sewer, and water systems. Key takeaways included long-term replacement planning, maintenance programs, setting service-level expectations to make cost-effective financial decisions, and maximizing grant opportunities. Also attended session on how to create something big. This session explored how public servants can balance everyday constituents' concerns with long-term community goals through a real-world case study. It provided practical strategies for managing routine issues and transforming big ideas into actionable community plans. My overall reflection, the IML conference reinforced the value of continuous education and provided actionable strategies for risk management, governance, budget development, infrastructure planning, and visionary leadership. Implementing these insights will strengthen South Village's operations, transparency, and community efforts. In light, also in one of the classes, I had the opportunity to have South Village, uh, community analyzed in regards to forecasting out to twenty thirty-four, uh, estimate, estimate from twenty twenty-four, uh, projections to twenty twenty-nine, and census which occurred in twenty twenty. In this report, it was able to provide me with a population summary from education to household numbers, to number of people in the household who are working, vacant units, occupied units, owner-occupied units, renter-occupied units, and then going to our marketing outlook opportunity, gaps reports. This report identified the need in the village, what is in the village, and how much money goes out of the village because of what we don't have in the village. I have submitted this report to the mayor for a copy for further discussion. I do want to thank the mayor for allowing the trustees the opportunity to go and network and dialogue. Thank the residents for entrusting us with the ability to go and simply do our jobs. But let me be clear to say, none of that counts if we cannot treat each other with the utmost dignity and respect. I sit in this seat, and I bring the three M's with me: mutual trust, mutual respect, and mutual accountability. That is what the residents have elected officials to do, or appointed officials to do. Thank you.
Like I said, all the meetings, that all the years that have been meetings, and meetings after the IML conference, you never had the digest from activities as we have this time. And thank you for your diligence, your willingness for growth, host. And thank you for your diligence, your willingness for growth personally, as well as professionally, and your willingness to come back and share what you learned with your fellow colleagues. And I'm certain many of our residents have heard and learned something as well. Through this role of the money, I appreciate everyone and all of your input. Moving on, there's a little bit more to go, and then we'll be out here in a little bit of time. We have a report from the senior advisor group, and I am going to ask that that two persons share what's new and current in terms of activities. Thank you.
Good evening, madam mayor, trustees, and residents. Coming up, we will have bingo brunch on Friday, October thirty-first, at eleven a.m. It is put together by Steps Towards Earning Pure Profit Financial Literacy Education. Refreshments will be served. We're asking all residents over fifty and over to come. They're gonna make a presentation on how to navigate once you retire, what to do with your investments. So, this is coming up on October thirty-first in the seniors' center at eleven a.m. And then also, coming up, November first, we will have our second or third annual Sneakers Ball. With this, it's free, we're asking all seniors over fifty to come. All the food will be provided for you, we will have music. You dress semi-formal, and the male or the female that have the most bling-out gym shoes will win a prize. So, we do this every year, and we like doing different activities to bring the seniors together, and we have fun, we have a good time. So, those are our two new activities that are coming up. And, madam clerk, I will make sure you get a flyer, and you too, mayor. I just have the one, they're still working on the flyer for the Sneakers Ball, but you shall have that before the end of this week. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
The Police and Fire Commission meeting is scheduled for this coming Thursday, October sixteenth, at seven p.m. And we look forward to having everyone. The other thing is that we are going to post a listing for the fire department. It is completed, and we will post it also on the meeting date, the sixteenth. That's your end my report?
Thank you.
Question?
Question, Peter Musset.
Ms. Hanson, where are you?
Seven, yeah.
Ms. Hanson, where are you meeting, tell?
Right here, in the rotunda.
Again, you're looking for a chair person who is on board with the incoming speaker. He was right on the stage there, he's very unresponsive to whether or not he's still going to serve. In terms of general comments, I just want to remind our trustees that I need the IML expansion force and all of the CTM force. They will do the virtual half IML and this is supposed to be, I promise you, I will not ask for them again. But if we do instead, we will do just slightly until that one is okay. I'm going to ask also those of you who have not committed, and some of them who have, to go back and rebuild rules and regulations, the policy relative to what we reimburse and what we cannot reimburse. You cannot be able to sneak out of that. Your reimbursement or your travel time is coming to an end. You leave your home to go downtown, and to go from downtown back to your home or to the village. Not passive. The time tends to get back to your home set. So, if you can never go back to those few who have submitted, and read your report that you provided, falls outside that and the other tenets that's within the policy and the CIC, under the test, and to have the opportunity to revise your reports. Trustee Johnson?
Well, I want on record me saying I don't give you authorization to pull any money out of my side.
And that doesn't matter.
And then I'll see you in court again.
I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Madam, can I ask just one thing? Madam clerk, were you able to be provided with the new form? You said there, they were going to give you a new form for the travel. Yeah, just use that one?
Yeah, and then if you move forward, it's just gonna be a check.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, yeah, I have to say. And she just returned to the second seat, I will wait.